Good morning. I would like to call to order the Tous County Board of 2022 regular meeting on Tuesday, eight, seven, twenty twenty-two. For the record, it is nine oh six. Madam Chair, Chief Tom Wolf. Mr. Fambro.
Present.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Present.
I'm Chair Bush.
Present.
Chair Tejel. Present. Ms. Deidre. Okay, so we are moving over to inspirational devotion. And we've got Father Mike Versi as the president today. But this is in my book, can you read?
Good morning. I thank you for your cooperation. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. God is loved, with a desire to make a sharing of this love he sent to see through the road to our aid. We're counting us to help those who believe in seeking devotion. He's very loved for all of us, Christ has been with you from the least among us. He called Joseph for a person instead of his disciples. And I'm going to ask for public input. The last thing, and the number of its organization, we're going to help aid their brothers and sisters.
Excuse me, Father Mike. Could you move your mic up a little bit? We're having a hard time. Thank you.
That is true. Blessed are you, Lord, God of mercy, if your son gave us a marvelous example of charity and a great command of love for one another. Send down your blessings and use your servants and commissioners. We're so generous, so we devote themselves to helping others. When they are called up in times of need, let them quickly serve it with their neighbor. We ask just to cross the river.
Amen.
Thank you, Father Mike. We pledge allegiance, we call our country, the United States of America. Good morning, Chair. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would share with you that we are in a moment. And I think there are things in for this one. As we look at the state of the nation, this is an example of perfect worship and light of our future. We would like to take a moment and acknowledge our coworker team, who is typically used to the face this time of year. And they're sharing the faces of us. We want to thank you and also remind voters to please come out. And every day from eight to five, we're at the Tous County Board. So thank you very much. Chair, Monday through Friday, eight to eight. And now, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have a motion? Madam Chair, I approve with two small revisions, changes on the consent agenda, so on fourteen. F, under the consent agenda, should simply read approval of and not discussion, consideration, and decision. And I would need, I would move that G, I think, if we remove all of these.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Ice Chair Bush. And second, by Commissioner Fambro, as stated, to remove or to correct F on fourteen to indicate approval, and G to remove. Any discussions? Commissioner Fambro, please.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Chair Bush.
Yes.
Chair Tejel. I'm sorry. Would you?
Yeah.
Chair, I apologize. But yeah, okay. That's the end. Okay. So next, if the decision confirmed, the decision to plead shall limit their conference to three minutes. Now, just a reminder, election may be taken. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment? And how about, at least, do you have anyone that is reaching out? Yes. Okay. Okay, seeing that, let's move on to presentations. And the first one, the big presentation, the information on the Tous County Health Council governing board, currently O H deliverable, DDC grant, and the draft is of Ms. Jennifer Aman, Board Chair, and Lawrence Medina.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners, Buenos Aires. I believe Jennifer is also online, Lawrence Medina. I am the Board, Tous County Hall Council Board Secretary, but now also represent District One, Commissioner Fambro's district. Turn it over to Jennifer. She's online, fully.
I'm here.
You want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Sorry, I'm having some video issues here and not being able to hear you all very well. But I'm Jennifer Aman, and I am the newly appointed Chair of the Board.
Thank you. Do you want to take the lead on the presentation, Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm curious if you actually have the, how can we share this hearing?
Marita, she is working on. So Jennifer, hold on a moment, and she'll get that.
Okay, okay. Just a minute.
Not that they're setting up. If there's a bad connection, we'll let you know, and Samantha and I will be your backup, just to make sure it's covered.
Okay, if you, do you have, yeah, I'm having issues. I'm sorry. Do you have the, here we go. All right, can you all see that? No. You can. All right. So this is, is everybody able to hear me and see this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lawrence. So this is, per our deliverables for the, our contract with the Department of Health, we need to create a faction annually just to review what we've been doing here. And so this is what we have for this hearing. So our objectives basically are to determine the priorities of the community regarding health and work with the network of the Health Council to improve health outcome. Our goals then are to improve access to vital services and to increase community engagement this is with all the different stakeholders across sectors in the community in order to create communication and collaboration regarding social determinants of health. And the successes that we've had in this past year are several, so both on the end of working with the Health Council, with the Department of Health, and also with a new funding that we just signed a contract for and began on April first, which is CDC funding to work on health equity and community rebuilding. And initially, this, the first year of this funding is to create vaccine equity. And we began this contract kind of late in the game, and so the first year for the funding is almost over, and we're kind of jumping straight into the second year, which is actually building health equity across the board, past the vaccine, and really rebuilding community health from a place of equity, moving forward out of a pandemic. To that end, we have, we are working on hire, using the funding to hire a collaborator, not collaborator, sorry, a coordinator for our Health Council. And we have also, between Lawrence and Samantha Rivera and myself, we have been going to numerous Health Council and also New Mexico Alliance of Health Council trainings on health equity and community rebuilding. And then another piece of what we are doing with that is, on June sixth, we are going to be, as a board, doing a training, kind of a really deeper training with Dr. Roybal, who is the previous Executive Director of the Conalma Health Institute, on strategic planning for board development. So this is not something that's happened yet, but it's right around the corner for us. And that's going to really help us as a board get structured and also understand a little bit better how to develop our relationship with the county as an advisory board, and how to work with the assessments to, of what the community priorities are on health and how to move forward with those. Also, to that end, we've been working with the New Mexico Alliance of Health Councils to strengthen our Health Council. They have been working across the strait with Health Councils to really make Health Councils a strong aspect of community health at a county-wide level. And then finally, we've been actively discussing how the Health Council can incorporate the hundred percent Tous County initiative, which obviously everybody knows is a big conversation in the community and which the county has adopted a resolution. And that conversation is still kind of a bunch of moving parts, and it's happening at the state level, across the different hundred percent initiatives from county to county. It's also happening within the New Mexico Alliance of Health Councils, and then for us as well. So that is all just evolving.
I came before the commission. We did submit a letter to the state treasurer. They did accept it and sent a letter back that they were going to purchase the education grocery seed tax bonds. The bond's having maturity February one, two thousand and twenty-three, which is in conjunction with when the last collection of the it says the grocery seed tax. It's a tax that which is in December that we were paying for two more months with the grocery seed tax. Our amount is four million seven hundred and fifty thousand. There's a pay for most education grocery seed tax. We are subject to a seven month rate next week. A few years credit plus one basis points if it is a tax gold loan. It does give us the skill, it gives us flexibility to be able to sell our groceries in the most new price. We will come back to the commission. And we're sure with the pricing result for obviously markets are subject to change. But based on today's interest rate, it looks like it'll be about about three point zero five percent. It'll be about eight thousand dollars a month. For term interest rates, it was dramatically for the last couple of months. It wasn't what we were seeing in market inflation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the financing component of it or turn over to for us to talk about.
Any questions?
Well, everyone of us here had the right to follow the the county commissioner, the county manager. The ordinance in front of you continues the same structure that has been in place within plus years on the outstanding education grocery seed tax. So it is important to note, nothing is changing in terms of the county's responsibilities. The pledge, I think it's important to take note of there is a pledge included solely to the education grocery seed tax. If there are, you know, no indication of there would be any kind of default or a lack of recognition yet, no one, state treasurer or any other entity party would have a claim against the county for any other kind of recognition. It is something to the education grocery seed tax. It does, Eric said, with the school districts primarily located in Tous County, in Tous Branchy. We have been in contact with the DeNiosco Schools, Russell Schools, Tous Schools. They all, the staff on them expressed interest. The rest of the schools have had a resumption of their interest in requesting kind of report. The DeNiosco School District is meeting the contest next week. The Tous School District is meeting next week. Really, it takes it all at the beginning opposition because of the physical very deal for the school districts because it's capital improvements that they don't have to prepay the debt. Again, there's a short term bond over seven months. You pay on February one, two thousand and twenty-three. The purchaser is the state treasurer's office. The ordinance approves a maximum of three seven fifty. The actual final terms of the testament schedule will be shown at approximately eight thousand in interest. It will be included in the substance of the case if it is signed by staff. Again, the ordinance continues what has been in place for quite a number of years to this time. There's nothing about this structure that is different. I'd answer any questions that you have got it. We're very comfortable. This is a very nice way to wrap up these tax process.
Great. Any questions? Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. How about the overcoming of the rest of this for schools? I don't see them listed.
So what the statute, Madam Chair, Commissioner, what the statute provides is that you have to have ninety percent of students applying in Tous County. And so you have the three division and their charter schools. So the plus academy charter schools, state charter schools, the River Academy and the Houston Way. Tous Schools have both charter schools. They all get distribution based on student population. But if there are certain, this is kind of the past, as you mentioned, there's titles to this, it might as well have slightly in Tous County, but they don't have to require presence within the county. And the statute qualifies for those seeds.
Thank you for that. Excellent. Any other question?
I just have a comment tab here. What about appropriate?
Okay, so because this is a public hearing, are there any public comments? How about any public comments?
Hello, can you hear public comments now?
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Jim Mort. I live at forty-two Old State Road three. And I would like to file a complaint, a long term.
Excuse me, hold on for a second. This is a public hearing? I'm sorry, hold on for a minute. This is a public hearing. And I believe you wanted to make a public comment and not in regards to the topic right now, is that correct? Because right now where we are at is in support of the ordinance. And so if you'll just hold on, if you're not wanting to keep in regards to that, we'll have to hold on for until we finish this portion of the agenda.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone want to comment in support of the?
In support of what?
Is the ordinance, twenty, number twenty-two dash two, authorized conditions to bill the county of Tous next year of an education grocery seed tax. That's where we're at right now. And if there's no comment, will it support?
There's.
It says, wait that please.
Valerie Trujillo.
Please, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Tous County Commissioners and County Manager Brent Harmio. We would like to vote and express our support of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else? And how about the democracy? Do you like to speak? And I forgot to remind that there was a race market. Okay, being done. I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. And it is nine thirty-four. And can you give a motion? Yes.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to the ordinance twenty-two dash two. And I would have a comment after a second.
That was a good one. Okay, so that motion to approve by Commissioner Penbro and my vice chair. And with the exception.
Yes, just a comment. It irks me that the money that has been derived from Tous County residents and visitors and used recently, U N M, Tous built a new building. And in the past, they built onto their campus. And they say it's based on everything is bid out of their Albuquerque. The headquarters, whatever they say. There's not one local contractor, not one local subcontractor, nothing local. All this money came from Tous County. And they don't even hire locals to do their project. And that's never a simple reason. And yes, they bid it out of out of three. The next time they get it, they put something in there. They better hire local contractors, just like they did it up on the ski area and everything else with when we did the tid with them. It was in there to do forty percent. They ended up doing like fifty-six percent local. So it's possible. Makes me sick to see Burnale County, San Diego County businesses building buildings that we're paying for. Not one local subcontractor or contractor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to see how the money is going to be spent. And we've had, in the past, yes. We may have not heard presentations from the school districts. And I very much like to hear how that money is going to be spent. I believe that will probably be through management asking for number four from the treasurer to let us know how, you know, the balance is. It would be nice to hear presentations from the districts as to what the money is.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, excellent point. Like I said, to the legal side, at the time these bond was issued, most recently in twenty eighteen, the school supervisor, they less provide a good summary of everything for what's been in the money on this trustee withdrawal. Your point is while they're in the day, and that's a fair request of them. But if you'd like to see in twenty eighteen those closing documents, I'm more than happy to send those up to you. Those were approved at the time, twenty eighteen, to give you money out of each school. Each school. And you should know that money is being spent for it. So from that perspective, I absolutely do that. And I can assure you that in twenty twenty-two, we will make sure that they provide that list information.
And also, if it's spent, not just what the projects report, would you actually spend the money?
Yes, and Madam Chair, Commissioner, and that's in our role. We also refer to the federal tax standpoint for twenty eighteen bond proceeds going out of the door. So we follow up on that, sure, with that's.
So one quick question, if those monies aren't fully expended, what happens?
So the, it's complicated there a little bit, Madam Chair, Commissioner. For twenty eighteen proceeds, because they are taxes and proceeds, which are these sort of type of inputs that may be expended within a certain period of time. Minimally, if they are sublimating after that three year period, they ought to provide an explanation of why they haven't been spent and expedited the expenditure for them. Ultimately, if they are the projects, statute making it is, I'm sure they'd say I've been a great DeNiosso, they need the money. I think we find a great way to make sure this Tous School is present. So that they were still using capital school projects within the district or within the county. Then ultimately, there is more to it to go to debt service. So if not, it cannot be used for operations at the schools. It has to be used for capital projects. And there are safeguards in the documents to make sure that there is no outlet for those money to be used somewhere else. And the existence of trustee is a critical role there as well as, Mr. Herr, as well, my role is to monitor that trustee only lets money out once it has requisitions and attached forces to ensure it is for capital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for completely being here today. It's really helpful. And I just want to add another question on what I was saying, because I think the last time we saw our report, there was some very significant unused balance in these accounts. So just again, having an update from the civil districts, like, are they aware that they have that unused balance? Do they have plans? Has it actually already been converted? It's just not sent down yet. I think that's important to know, especially as we go into these last seven months. So thank you. I wish I'd asked you another question.
One more comment again. I think some of the problems we might encounter, the individual districts finding contractors that are able to do the work, the high cost of construction materials. And maybe that's one of the reasons some of these projects never got completed is the issue of local contractors and having to go to state contractors because they can't find local contractors to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, great point. Any other question? And okay, so then. Commissioner Penbro?
Yes.
Commissioner Modon?
Yes.
Rachel Druck?
Yes.
Cheryl Dino?
Yes.
Madam Chair, before we go to the general, to.
Oh, yes, thank you.
It's citizens are hearing the large amount of silence going through town. That is not an emergency. It's the annual law enforcement court rub that's coming for it maybe this time. But it is not an emergency.
Commissioner, thank you for mentioning that. Because I always have it. And yeah, let's go back to public comment. And then we have Jim, that correct? Would you please stay here for me? And please yourself, please, and make your comments.
My name is James Mort. I live at forty-two Old State Road three. Hold on. Do we have a chance to talk now?
Go ahead. We've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. For the last few years, I've been putting up with Mr. Mayberry's continued.
Roseberry.
Trash, Roseberry, I'm sorry. Rosenberry, his trash, his threats to harm me, his threats to burn my place down. He's a known meth head. I'm tired of picking up his trash because he won't even put it in a bag. And you know what? The toilet paper flying down the road with used toilet paper flying down the road is getting sickening. It's been going on for too long and doesn't seem like anybody wants to do anything about it except for listen to our complaints. I'm tired of complaining. Please do something. Get this man put behind bars where he should be. Thank you.
I don't even know if they heard.
Yep.
I resonate with you.
Thank you.
May I? Go ahead, please.
Um, Commissioner Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Pfeffler. You mentioned that if fireworks down, they have to be closer for you to provide. Is it possible there are a bit of, um, wondering about the second, uh, fire on the state? Oh, on fireworks, is that something within the county's authority or not?
All of that is, uh, it's handled by the state statute and I believe this was in the county's authority. Um, Otero County, for instance, has passed its ordinance with regard to sale of fireworks. Uh, and, and they've made it so it's an ordinance rather than this proclamation. So they don't have to keep passing it every year and it goes beyond that period of time we're talking about. Uh, what I'm talking about with regard to the resolution and the statute is if you're going to do the shorthand way of doing it, which is the resolution way, you have to piggyback onto your period of time set out in the statute. However, if you want to pass a full-blown ordinance with regard to this, I believe that is within your authority. And what a Tera County and other counties do is they take in language from the statute and they basically codify it in their own ordinances. And it's not temporary in that sense, but they follow all of the procedural filings or ordinance. And certainly that's something I think worth a front on if we want to pass something like that.
Commissioner Madam Chair.
The person that looks at legislature probably trying to ask for local adoption, to be able to ban the sale and use of fireworks and would be struck down every year. And I understand if I hear the only person who can ban the sale of fireworks in the state, the next move is the governor to. I think I want to check on that. And then what we can do is, I believe, restrict the use. But I think we can check, I do not believe we can ban the sale of fireworks. I, I think you're right, so, uh, and maybe I didn't speak well. What I said, what I meant was that we have to follow the state statute, the prohibition of fireworks. Okay, so we're not going to change the, uh, I agree with you. We can't do anything more than stay as it is. Right? And it's 20 days prior to, uh, what you're, what you did. What you did by passing remarks is not have to do this every year. This is what a Tera County, not just other counties do. Um, but subsequently, it's not different of other states to say. So if you want to just do a complete prohibition, uh, I think there's probably better, if it's tolerance and whatever we have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, yes, yes, has Otero.
Ordinance Commission. That's in my knowledge. Um, I think I played, I did some quick research on the record folks meeting. So I, I found that in Otero County, I haven't had a chance to really find it. It makes sense though, because it's consistent with the state statute, um, that we can. And there's, there's two kinds of authority that we have. Um, one is, and it's very referencing this, uh, resolutions in the 437. Basically, what that logic deals with, anything that a municipality. Uh, unfortunately, a municipality is limited by the statute that Mr. Fambro was talking about and the 20, the 20-day window, not sure. So we can't really go beyond that. Uh, and that's, and Otero County didn't go beyond that, I understand. It's just more of a housekeeping, where you wouldn't have to keep doing this 20 days before.
I'd like to look into both options because I've always been told the ordinance can be stricter than what the state is doing. I want to, you can give us both options. That would mean we'd have to publish our ordinance and see if the timeline fits. I'm highly interested in ordinance given climate change. I don't think any of the conditions are going to.
We can look into it, sir. And, uh, the, the timing of when we do that, we're, we're not being, I mean, the fireworks industry is looking at everything how they do in July. They need not be as intended in September, October to come in light of it. Huge lobbying, we lost, you know, others, I mean, they were all in for months, I guess. But also. My cubs. Sorry. I don't think it's, I don't think it's bad, some cubs. But maybe, I don't think any of those.
I understand, I just think given climate change, the severe drought, the mega drought, that I'd be very surprised if it were challenged and upheld in this report, given the severity of what we're doing.
I, I'll look into that. If, one of the arguments we've always used, but it makes no sense that we can't use a propane charcoal for certain kinds, you know, certain things. But you know that, right? I've been to very few propane stove fires in my career, but I've been to, uh, on this, uh, a bunch of fires. I hope 77 of one day. Yeah. I didn't make all of them, I mean, we had some, so, fireworks related fires in 19.
Oh, two.
No, nineteen. I want to say eighty-six or eighty-seven.
Any further questions? Question.
So, so with regard to what you have before you, I think you should, you can, um, someone could make the motion, uh, pull for a forum and strike that less per, per possibility. You take a vote on that forum and then you take a vote on the amended resolution.
Okay, is there a motion to start?
Yes, I'm checking the votes. Oh, certainly.
We, we also would add a sentence, two sentences, we're going to, and so we have, like to add, and we have the same, some extra exemptions as well, uh, for public works to do, sure, you have all the county throws, the rush, way, I don't know what these are from here. So we want us to be able to use our chainsaws to, or even today, since you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm going to leave for a session. I may be a little long to speak. Uh, but I can see this one, reviewing this, I noticed yesterday that it, it's real restrictive to allowing us to, again, pass a fire mitigation along our roads. As everybody recently found out that a little piece of, uh, catal converters that started that fire in Taus County. So, you know, vegetation that was along this roadway, uh, was a little higher and next to this little hot little piece of ceramic, uh, chick flew up there and that's a nicer. So through this process, I talked to Chief this morning, if we could ever create this, improve this back with the revision to state that, uh, we can be able to utilize the tree treatment equipment and, uh, weed eaters along our road sites from hours of ten, eight to ten in the morning, just to allow us to support the fire mitigation along our roadways, but it still, of course, this chainsaw, all our chainsaws are, you can have a starboard around it. So we are doing everything in our power to, to remedy this, but I would be just one thing that I would like to see, uh, prior to adoption of this approval, uh, if this should be in place. But, uh, Saturday, questions?
Uh, commissioners, any questions in the race with, uh, anything?
No, Madam Chair, the reason for the exemption is that we take this time, uh, from 11 to three, it's the worst time for fireworks. But I'll teach the same in that direction.
Phil, uh, yes, we need to know where that exemption is going to be put and the exact, so new.
Well, Madam Chair, may I? I apologize. As you know, this was a emergency, so we're kind of all trying to get this done as quick as possible, maybe haven't had a chance of.
We totally understand.
But it has to go. In my opinion, the work will just describe a public work, sure, as I, this is covered by the prohibition anyway. So I don't think it's, I don't think there's a legal exception. Uh, when we look at the open burning prohibited, it says agricultural burning, bonfires, burning explosives, fireworks, campfires, ceramic fires, controlled burning, outdoor cooking fires, outdoor heating fires, hot torch burning, open burning, open flames, slash piles, outdoor smoking, and weed burning. None of those things, that's the prohibition, I think, which is talking about, which is, you know, using weed eater, that sort of thing. So I don't think that prohibition, I don't think we need an exception because I don't think it's a good prohibition and I think it might confuse them. So I, I submit me on.
Okay, uh, yes, Madam Chair, the enforceability is to be, to be, and it's entirely?
Yes.
And because that is only enforced under an ordinance or?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, with the one exception of a, of resolutions, uh, proclamation passed, we've been putting it, well, we'll do that.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, a motion to strike the fourth bullet point, uh, which is entitled the enforceability problem, Resolution 2022 dash twenty-four.
I will second. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Fambro, the vice chair, I was starting to vote voting. And, um, you got it, you got it.
Madam Chair, I think we have to have the resolution presented before the amendment of the enforceability experience. So it has to just be two credits.
Well, I, I think what you, what you have is, uh, a forum that's been named by Commissioner Fambro, that has to be voted on first. And then after that's been voted on, then there's a vote on the amended resolution. That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, we're having a couple of. Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Are you sure, brush?
Yes.
Chair De Hill?
Yes.
So moving forward, there's a motion to amend the, um, resolution.
We need a motion to pass the amended.
Okay, a motion, is there a motion to pass the amended? Oh, my gosh, okay, yeah.
Madam Chair, a motion, we pass the amended version of Resolution 2022 dash twenty-four, declaring hazardous fire conditions and imposing restrictions on the fire smoking and other emissions.
I will second. Okay, thank you, we have the amendment. And he seconded as stated by Commissioner Brush, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fambro, um, I will repeat, uh, I'm hoping this. Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Are you sure, brush?
Yes.
Chair De Hill?
Yeah.
I swear we'll get this right when I turn the votes. Okay, so moving forward, uh, discussion consideration and decision regarding the approval of Resolution 2022 dash twenty-nine, a resolution imposing an applicable tax for benefit of, uh, the Apollo Water Sanitation District.
Uh. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, with us here, Metro Quintana, uh, representing Apollo Water Sanitation District and, uh, Demis, Christine Demis is now on. She was attending the training, uh, every year, uh, around the same timeframe, Apollo Water Sanitation District. It has, well, it's a fire, water sanitation coming for us, they're taking the, uh, Resolution 22 dash twenty-nine first. It's a, it's a resolution re- imposing that ordinance tax with the benefit of Apollo Water Sanitation District. So the sanitation district, and they have eight point one two two mills on within the designated district, our local home's personal property livestock, and it's to record that, the tax in benefit of Apollo Water Sanitation District. Um, we collect the tax in the treasurer's office, the district's, the tax back out to the water sanitation district. Stand for any question within this Quintana and this game, sir, I don't know if you have any specific questions to that product.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, um, I would like to go ahead and note that I asked for a chat room for a, the test office yesterday, what that difference would be, if it was an increase or decrease, and just, uh, for record and, and for the information, Commissioner, uh, the Apollo, uh, they, just the, the, uh, what was it, before us, before eight point one two two mills, thousand pounds, uh, it was last year, so, so there is an increase appointment here, just probably to be, um, good for us to know. And that the, you know, I think, uh, my head just makes sense. So, but that means that it's not the motion.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of Resolution 2022 dash twenty-nine, imposing that law tax with benefit of Apollo Water Sanitation.
You were correct. I will second. Okay, there were the motions approved. Resolution from the page dash twenty-one, uh, from Commissioner Fambro, I second my vice chair, letting discussion. May I? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Are you sure, brush?
Yes.
Chair De Hill?
Yes.
So next, the discussion consideration and decision regarding the approval of Resolution number 2022 dash thirty, a resolution imposing an applicable tax with benefit of the Apollo Water Sanitation District.
Good, here, Madam Chair, uh, this is very similar to the resolution that has passed. This is, uh, Resolution 22 dash thirty, for, uh, that was brought to Water Sanitation District. The difference here is, we did, uh, the fire at Water Sanitation District is, uh, five point three one two mills on the property in the designated district. Can I stand for any questions? May I, Madam Torrio, Tomo is online, if there's any questions about that. I'm not sure if there's any representative, there may be ones on this side.
Commissioners, if I may also point out that there is an increase in this particular, uh, tax rate. It was four point three four eight last year, uh, an increase of point nine six, it's reasonable. So would that be part of the motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2022 dash thirty, imposing an applicable tax with benefit of the Apollo Water Sanitation District.
So.
Our vice chair has the motion approved and decided by Commissioner Fambro. Chair De Hill?
Yes.
Are you sure, brush?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We are now at contract with the given MOU with item eight, thirteen eight, request for approval of a memorandum of understanding between Taos County and Red River Marshall's Office for Law Enforcement Services and the question.
We must have stepped out of the, also, uh, he might be in the cooperators meeting, is it starting already? So this, uh, memorandum of understanding has been reviewed by Mr. Attio and we have discussed with Chair Folgoff. And this is for law enforcement services during the law of any event, uh, regarding the bike ride. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Uh, Chair, Mr. Hameo, does the specific event need to be identified in this MOU? I don't think I saw it in there, but probably it's.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Brush, I didn't know the answer to your question. I don't think so, Mr. Attio and, and Sheriff Holgoff, uh, discussed this fair, fairly, so I'm not sure why they went to put it in, but.
Yes, Commissioner.
Is there a time? I didn't look all the way to the end.
Let's see.
I couldn't get it to load, but if there's a time, actually, it goes until December 31st, so.
Hmm.
Huh. I guess it's any time they would need us, not just specifically for the one event.
Right.
I can't answer that because I know we were discussing the, what, well, they were discussing the one event.
Okay. And Madam Chair, Mr. Hameo, on page two, we have, um, the Taos County Finance Director identified, and that might need an update.
Sure. We'll correct that.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Um, one further update, also on page five, it, um, we need to update the county clerk as well.
Page five, will you leave here?
We need Ms. Valerie to be there.
Oh, yes, I did see that, and thank you for pointing that out, I did notice that.
Okay, uh, yes, Madam Clerk, I, yeah, I appreciate if you note those two updates in your motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the MOU between Taos County and Red River Marshall's Office for Law Enforcement Services, with the update of the Taos County Clerk's name on page five and Taos County Finance Director's name on page two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chair, uh, has, um, made a motion to approve with, uh, two corrections, which she stated very, very, very clearly, excuse me, and a second by Commissioner Fambro. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair De Hill?
Yes.
Next, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of a memorandum of understanding between Eighth Judicial District Attorney's Office, the Public Defender, Taos County, Taos Alive Coalition, and the Town of Taos regarding the Let Everyone Advance With Dignity, LEAD program, LEED program. Um, and, uh, Manager Hade Mew, are you going to start?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, before you for consideration and decision is an, an updated memorandum of understanding. We're working with, uh, Ms. Rasa O'Donnell, who's here present and will speak in a few minutes. There's been a little bit of a program shift since Ms. O'Donnell last led, and it's, we've rebranded as well to Let Everyone Advance With Dignity is now that new acronym for LEED. Essentially, the rest of the MOU is, it remains in place, and at this point, I'll just turn it over to Ms. O'Donnell, and that we should get explained any other changes or further talk about, uh, the new branding.
Welcome.
Thank you, good morning, Commissioners. Um, so LEED provides intensive case management for the individuals with substance use disorder who are at risk of criminal justice involvement. Um, I presented the original LEED MOU on October 5th, 2021, for the approval and signature by the county commission to confirm the county manager's, um, staff participate in the LEED program oversight group, known as the Policy Coordinating Group. I'm asking for the same commitment from the county in this newly revised MOU. The changes we made were to remove law enforcement commitment and reband, rebrand the LEED acronym from Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion to Let Everyone Advance With Dignity. Let Everyone Advance With Dignity is an option for LEED operations that de-centers law enforcement as gatekeepers to LEED services. So instead of relying solely on law enforcement referrals of individuals with substance use disorder who are involved in low-level nonviolent crimes related to their disease, Taos LEED can accept referrals from community partner agencies and self-referrals from individuals. Uh, with this new MOU, the Taos Let Everyone Advance With Dignity program will continue to keep its doors open to law enforcement, should they choose to participate and make referrals in the future. Uh, thank you for your consideration, and I stand for questions.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I have, I have one question. Thank you, Rasa, thank you for coming back, and thank you for continuing to push this forward and, and stick with the program. Um, the LEED program is important. Just one little question, one for you, actually, and one for maybe our county manager. It, it identifies the, uh, where was this? The PCG, and could you just remind us what that stands for? I think I can guess, but I don't think I saw that spelled out in here.
Yes, the PCG is the Policy Coordinating Group.
Okay.
And it's the oversight, um, group that, um, for the program.
Thank you. And, and Brent, did we have somebody from the county side kind of, um, given the responsibility to participate in as part of the PCG?
Uh, yes, Mr. Cordova is, is the designee, as well as Mr. Silva, myself, so between either Mr. Me and Mr. Silva will represent management, and Mr. Cordova, in a sense, represents the boots on the ground. This last, uh, Friday, we had the, the meeting, and, uh, Mr. Cordova made sure that one of us wasn't be present because he couldn't be present because he was attending the other meetings, so.
Thank you.
Between the three of us, we'll have it covered.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I, I would like to make a comment, thank you, Rasa, thank you once again, I want to echo what, uh, Vice Chair has said. Uh, you've been pushing through and, and I think it's an important program, so thank you for your, your due diligence in, in keeping this moving forward, so, great. With, uh, that being said, is there a motion to approve?
Okay, Madam Chair, I will move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Eighth Judicial District Attorney's Office of the Public Defender, Taos County, Taos Alive Coalition, and the Town of Taos regarding the Let Everyone Advance With Dignity or LEED program.
And I will second that. I want to earn my paper, okay?
Madam Chair, just a brief discussion.
Brief discussion.
I'm really saddened that law enforcement chose not to get on board. I hope when elections come around, we'll have a new sheriff that is really interested in this program. And I'm just disappointed, I wish the sheriff was here. What? Well, I just am disappointed the current administration at the office of the sheriff has made it difficult to, um, join with you.
Okay, let's, let's move forward, I, I don't think we realize we're in the same spaces. Okay, so we, there is a motion by Vice Chair to approve, and a second by myself, and Madam Clerk called for the vote. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair De Hill?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, let's, uh, move on to consent agenda. And, uh, A is approval of a budget adjustment to the Human Resources Department, zero one zero one dash ten ten, for, uh, per diem expenses through fiscal year end, also, I'm sorry. Uh, B is approval of a budget adjustment to the Project Manager Department, zero one zero one dash one one two zero for health insurance expenses through fiscal year end. C is approval of a budget adjustment to the Emergency Management Department, zero one zero one dash one eight one zero for fuel expenses through, um, fiscal year end. D is approval of a budget adjustment to the Public Works Department, zero two zero four, for fuel expenses through, uh, fiscal year end. E is approval of a budget adjustment to the Willard Peak Fire Department, zero two zero six dash fifteen hundred for non-capital expenses for emergency equipment through fiscal year end. And, um, F is, uh, approval of a rescue, rescue unit for the Honda Sacrifice Fire Department through HGAC contract. Commissioners, that is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read items A through F.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner, Commissioner O'Donnell, and a second from Commissioner Fambro. Any discussion? I don't think there's any, I've seen none, Madam Clerk called for the vote. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Chair De Hill?
Yes.
So, next is county managers' reports, reported matters, so Manager Hade Mew, please.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Um, over the last two weeks, uh, our focus has been really working on the fires, uh, the evacuation, the shelter centers, taking part in the cooperative meetings, both, uh, myself and Mr. Silva have worked with different, uh, portions of the incident command team as they are, uh, came into Taos and they set up shop. as they are, came into Taus and set up shop officially on Sunday and opened up this Team One, which is now going to be the West Zone. And then, as you heard yesterday, as you have heard, they're going to be dividing the fire into three separate zones. There'll be the North, South, and West Zone will be part of the West. So we have worked with them in different capacities, also trying to get them the National Guard Armory to move their Incident Command. Not sure what the final decision was there on that. The nine acres that we're purchasing for Mr. Cunningham, that is going to be used to stage equipment. So don't be alarmed if you see equipment staged here. I know they reached out to Mr. Silva on that and they reached out again yesterday and Sheriff Holbrof brought them over here as well. They saw that Major Polk has worked with Mr. Martinez from the Assessors Office on some mapping for the Yanover, the areas. So we've provided the mapping for that. And I'd like to thank Mr. Martinez for providing that to Major Polk of the National Guard. And, and everybody is working as a team. We are in conversations with Assistant Superintendent Trujillo and setting up the school as an evacuation center as well. So we traded texts this morning so they stand ready to open up as a shelter. We have way too many donations at both the Pinasco Shelter site and the Ag Center site. We're running out of space at both sites. Superintendent Sandoval did ask for no more donations to come in. She did send me Mr. Silva some pictures. And speaking with OEM Coordinator Ortega yesterday, it's the same issue. They've taken down cots because there's not enough space with all the used clothes coming in. And so, so we're taking down cots. It's not a good thing because of the space. So there's been a lot of activity in that area. We are going to need to have two special meetings going forward. One will be scheduled next week. If there's a time that does not work for you, please let us know so we can work around your schedule. This is to our budget review. And then also on May 31st, we'll have the budget approval to get that approved into Department of Finance Administration. So what I would, we'd like to do is kind of go over the budget with you all next week and then any adjustments that have to be made will be done and approved on the 31st for submission on June 1st. Ms. Vahill and Mr. Fresquez are working very hard on the budget and they were both here on Saturday and Sunday, working on that. And I'm going to sit down with them and go over that budget with them this afternoon. And Mr. Silva and our engineer, Mr. Sanchez, are working. Did have a meeting yesterday regarding the Arus Cavante Bridge, also known as the Pilad Bridge. So they're working for potential contractor on that. We can't really get into the specifics, but they did have that meeting yesterday. And hopefully, we can get a contractor to work on, on that bridge. And then the item, the $250,000 that we pulled off the agenda, the consent agenda, that's going to be done internally. And I had mentioned at a prior commission meeting that we needed to kick in another $250,000 for match funds for the flap grant. That will be distributed to the federal government this week or by next week. But what's important here is, unless they give it to you, Mr. Silva, they, they did award a contractor for the John Dunn Bridges to do that work, but they need the other $250,000 before they do that grant announcement. We also did get the, we did get approved for a community wildfire protection grant from New Mexico Counties. Commissioner Fanbro, do you remember that amount? $15,000? So we got, Commissioner Fanbro had already let me know, but we've already got the word yesterday, I think Commissioner Fanbro let me know about a week ago. So we got that notice yesterday. And the other item that we're working on is with JR Logan and this is moving fairly quickly. We've had a couple of different thoughts in mind. JR did go up to Yanover San Juan and Rodarte to look at the brush yesterday. There is some monies coming into Taus Community Foundation from Chevron for a donation to their fund for approximately $125,000. And then they're donating $125 to altogether New Mexico Fund. But what we asked for was monies to maybe help some of the elderly or homebound folks clear the brush. Speaking with Mr. Logan this morning, I figured that might not be able to work. So we're just going to see if we can support. We're getting some money from the foundation to help support our facilities and doing the chipping and that type of stuff and have folks who bring us the, the, the slash piles. We did put a press release on our website and I'm not sure if it's gone live on Facebook yet for the Yanover San Juan, Rodartes, Santa Barbara residents to bring their slashes and we will chip it. Mr. Martinez will be on site tomorrow to do the chipping and that ask Carson, but they're also chipping as fast as they can. They asked for additional chipper if they had one, but we know they're clearing their power lines as quickly as they can as well. And that's it.
That's quite a bit, right? Well, thank you very much. I know that the team has been super busy with the fires and coordinating and so lots, lots happening. So thank you for that. Any questions, Commissioners? I, go ahead and then I'll make a comment.
Yes, I do. Mr. Harmio, this chipping that you're going to set up for tomorrow, where?
At the Public Works Yard.
At the Road Yard. And let, I don't, I didn't see the press release yet. I tried, I didn't, I haven't seen it.
It's on our website. We haven't, we came in this morning and it's been a whirlwind. That's why I was down here at 9:00 AM.
Let me just make sure that this is for everyone or just those that are in the set mode? I mean, is it going to be for?
Set and ready. So anybody within the Pinasco or the greater Pinasco area will be in the ready and set mode. We will, we only have one chipper in the county. So right now, there's a roll-off in Vasco Dido as well. I'm not sure how that's going to work out, but we're, the plan is to try to get, we're going to collect all brush and limbs and anything that's for residents are creating a defensible space around their dwelling. So that's, that's part of the, the process that's going on right now. Public Works Yard, since it's somewhat in a grasslands area, the moisture content's a little bit greater than other areas, not as dry. Plus, we have an area, a defensible space of just, it's a dirt yard. So we're going to collect all that slash pile and then we'll be chipping it sometime throughout the week. It's either going to be tomorrow or Thursday. But at the same time, we're trying to identify the Vasco Dido because Kit Carson, amongst others, are doing the defensible space mitigation around their property. So we're, that pile's growing as well. So, so we're, we're trying to identify both of these level of needs and then working through them. But at least we have an identified location that's in a safe area, which is the Public Works Facility within the Pinasco area. So.
So, and what are the hours?
That's going to be from eight to four. So 7:30 to four, the hours of the operation. There's, I was hoping that we could probably keep it passed a little bit later in the evening. It's just I don't have the staff to stay there through the duration of that time. And there's a lot of materials and that I need to close the gate. I don't feel comfortable leaving it open without somebody not there.
All right, and I hope this is on Facebook and on the website and the hours are
It's on the website.
included. We need to really push this out.
Yes.
And, but at the Chama Sal transfer station, there are going to be people who are still going to take their brush there.
Yes, yes. And, and we're trying to divert that because it's not in our best interest to take that. That property was donated by the Forest Service, so we're in a heavily critical area. So it's best that we don't take that slash pile there and that's why we identify the Public Works Yard as, as the location. Plus, it's logistically closer to all the individuals that are in the set and ready patterns at this time.
And I just hope our tenant up there is aware
Yes.
of these
Yes.
new hours and that I just hope we don't get people throwing their trash in those piles.
There's no new hours in, in the transfer station. Those are maintaining the same hours. So, so there, there's no increased hours on those ones right there. So. But yes, he's aware of diverting the trash. I need solid waste, trash identified as trash. And then whatever is vegetation that could be chipped is going to be diverted back to the Public Works Yard.
And who's going to man it at, at the Rodarte Road Yard?
District, it'd be Juan Lopez, who's our District Five Supervisor. And his number's within this media press release that we put together yesterday. So he's, he's receiving calls as, this morning, he's already had a couple of people drop off stuff.
Very good, thank you. We really need it up there.
And, but what I'm hearing is this grant, it's not going to apply now or a possible grant to help.
We did talk to Mr. Logan this morning. We might try to use it to support Mr. Lopez. And that way, he could do his daily duty. So we're going to see about maybe somebody else chipping it or use the grant in that fashion. Or maybe we can get some money back for Mr. Lopez's time. Yesterday, we wanted to go in there, but go in there. Yesterday was kind of my idea because I thought about this over the weekend. We saw a citizen, he was on actually Channel 4 news as well. And what the Forest Service is doing is they're going in and triaging homes, clearing debris, brush. And then there's also individuals that have stayed back, like this Mr. Sandoval from the San Miguel area, or actually Motta County area, that pulled away his son, who's a Portales Fire Department member. He made sure that his, their family home had the defensible space. The fire burned all around him and that's what I was thinking, that we could try to create. Mr. Logan has also, on our behalf, talked to the Forest Service. Now, with individuals there, when we talked this morning, they were a little bit afraid that we'd get in the Forest Service way. And that's why thus he thought, okay, after reading the Kenny goes, maybe we can help with the slash piles. And because we, my thought, and Mr. Logan's thought yesterday, let's be ahead of the Forest Service in triaging homes, creating that defensible space for the elderly or the homebound that didn't have nobody else. And so Mr. Logan have been in communication on our behalf with the Forest Service and they're just afraid we're going to get in their, the way.
Maybe, I don't know, Brent or Jason, if there's any money in the emergency declaration to hire like Tarzans or I, I'm trying to think of the other tree trimming place here. And they have multiple chipper's attached trucks that hollowed away. And especially since Pinasco to the Vasco Dido is, is, you know, maybe we could contract with them to help in this early preparedness. Just an idea.
No, okay, we'll talk to Mr. Logan again. And then we want to talk with Ms. O'Brien as, as well about this. So we've traded emails and texts yesterday. We met with Chief Cordova, was with the two of us and JR. And we're trying to do our part as well. The other thing that we're, I wanted to use this money for, and I did express this to the, at least the Chair, is also trying to find a way to stand up the volunteer fire department members for structure protection and pay them or stipend or some kind of salary. So if they're working, you know, how it goes, and we had this example a month ago, is everybody comes, goes, responds to the fire, the volunteers, they have to leave the fire scene at six in the morning because they have to go to work. So we thought, okay, how can we stand up a crew of volunteers and give them a stipend? So if their boss doesn't pay them, if they stay back with us, we would lose pay. Still trying to figure that component out of it. And because originally, that's where I wanted to use some of this money. Chevron said no. Lisa told me no. I thought about ARPA dollars. I talked to Rida O'Connell yesterday. I'm going to be about using ARPA. And then she thinks, she's, has a call into FEMA for me to see if we can use FEMA dollars to, to stand up our volunteer fire department for structure protection if need be. And then also, I would like to have folks on standby and be able to pay them as well.
I, I think it's a great idea, Commissioner.
State forestry has something, if they could, if they would issue an incident number that may be a state reimbursable project for the volunteers.
So Madam Chair, my concern is if Yanover San Juan and Santa Barbara get moved to go mode, they can no longer be at their homes, then the Forest Service can come in and clear debris. So time is of the essence. That's why I asked about how we can immediately get people paid like you were talking with JR over the next couple of days and not wait for grants, that how we can authorize that, the funds. It's going to be too late to search this grant or that grant. Taus Community Foundation has said no from the Chevron money. So I just think time is of the essence and for those elderly who may need help, we need it now. And we need volunteers now or those who will get paid now, not calls to everybody to see if we can do it. You know, we've got a short window here of this week, maybe not even this week. So it just sounds like, again, it's local residents are going to have to do this on their own. Because we don't have any money right now to help out the elderly.
Well, we're, we're trying to apply lessons learned from what we saw or what I saw from Motta, Motta County, San Miguel County. So I want to be head, that's why I thought, okay, we can pay contractors. So that's, which I don't think we, the money will come through, like Mr. Logan said this morning. They don't want us up there. So we have to rethink and we're going to talk a little bit later today with Mr. Logan. And, and right, right now, yeah, it is everybody bringing the piles, the slash piles to us until we figure something else out. And, and, and then we could follow the advice of the, of the feds on scene. And, and that's really what it's coming down to. And Mr. Logan met with them yesterday and talked with them and they kind of thought it out. And, and we're just trying to stand up this program and figure it out. And we're going to try to figure it out.
Well, I for one appreciate the efforts and, and I understand the concerns of Commissioner O'Donnell. But I, I see the team every O'Donnell, but I see the team every day really plugging at getting all these things in order, making sure that at the same time, they're not getting in the way, because that's important. There's structure out there and structure within here, within our team, so thank you all very much. I would like to say a big thank you for the website update, and if you could just point that out, I think that is something that the public needs to be made aware of, and a lot of effort has been put into it, and it's just gonna get better, so could you please?
Right, thank you, Madam Chair, thanks for, it was a good plug there, and thanks to Mr. Silva, too, who took the lead last week in creating that Facebook page. It has, well, not Facebook page, the page off of our website, if you click on it, and you see if you can bring that up, and then it gives all the fire resources, the FEMA resources. I think we have every link that needs to be in there now, and we're getting new links and we're adding them. Camnet has helped us over the weekend, as well as last night, this morning, where Mr. Silva, Ms. Aaron Beatty are getting a crash course on updating the website as well, and we, over Sunday night, Camnet created the press release link, and then we have the other links for all the resources should be there as well. And then we have had some good suggestions from Deke and Jill Klein as well, she's provided some good feedback, and we took that into consideration and getting that up. Don't know if you want to add anything, Jason?
Now, I think during this crisis that we're working with, this is a kind of a work in progress and a document that can be updated on a daily basis, so these cooperative meetings, I was actually sitting on one, that's why it was in the corner. We've had a great day yesterday, we only increased by, we're 299,565 acres, and it's a good day because the day before it was 298, 62 acres, I think. So, we increased minimally, but we had a great day on the fire, so that they're doing all, everybody is putting a bunch of effort into this and supporting our community, the northern area, so, but to get back to the website, if you, anybody can see anything that, some constructive criticism, provide me some additional documents, links that could be supportive, I'll navigate through here and I'll plug and play as needed, it's always, it's good, it's a working document. And as far as the cooperatives meetings will be going up this afternoon, because we just received a file of past cooperatives meetings, so if anybody in the public would like to see what's happening on a day-to-day basis within this, the Forest Service and all federal agencies within our local agencies, they're able to view this at any given time. So, but please, I just, I look forward to feedback, and we can build this page to support the greater community and at least inform everyone.
And then you can see it has the direct link to the map that the San Diego County teams.
I do wanna say, there's two things that has happened, everybody at the county has stepped up. I have our GIs specialist out of our assessor's office, Anthony Martinez, provided a ton of maps, he worked diligently throughout the night, providing some mapping for National Guard, as National Guard is coming into our community, they're needing some maps, and Anthony worked through late part of the night, you know, I mean, I received an email from him at one time because he was having such a technology issue, Camnet was able to fix that issue and continue, so there's some mapping that came out this night, is gonna be supportive with, to inform the National Guard of all the locations, so if at the need, they're gonna be deployed within our community to provide support, they're gonna know logistically where all our communities are at and how they're gonna address the level of need that's gonna be asked upon. So, so in general, though, this is something that we normally don't do as a county, but you know, I mean, everybody's stepping up to do their part, and you know, the training wheels came off with the shelter, and now it's hitting our community, so how we're working through this, and I feel we're doing a great job, but you know, there's gonna be some hiccups along the road, but since we don't deal with this on a day-to-day basis, you know, I mean, please inform me of anything that you feel it needs to be improved, or on the website, or informative towards support our community, please let me know, and we can work through that.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Brent and Jason, thank you so much for everything, and thanks to all of our team, our emergency management, our Fire Chief, Mr. Martinez with GIs, because mapping is critical in this situation, like, thank you, I know that this is hard. It's, I think, hard for everybody, and I think it's important to just acknowledge that this is extremely stressful. We drive through town and it feels like our community is mobilized, because we are mobilized, right? So, what I just keep reminding myself, and I hope we can all keep in mind, is that we just, it's a really good time to be extra kind and gentle and generous with each other, because it's stressful. Every time the wind picks up, our stress level, whether we know it or not, like, picks up, so let's just try to be really, really nice, and thank you so much for everything you're doing. With the website information, Brent was putting out a call for employees to volunteer, I know Ms. Sunday has already raised her hand to do that. People can go to Taos Connects to volunteer with the Red Cross or anywhere else. And I think it is worth repeating something that you said, Brent, which is that our shelters, Pinyasco and the Ag Center, don't need any more stuff, but I think that the Taos Community Foundation is doing a pretty good job of collecting monetary donations for those who are able to do that, so if you go to taoscf.org, they have a fund for Taos, if, because I know we all want to feel like we can help as much as is within our means, so just wanted to emphasize those couple of things, but thank you, thank you to our whole Taos County team.
And then another thing I would like to add, Ms. Quintana is here from Senator Lujan's office, we're gonna visit for a little while, she's just checking in with us. Carmelo and Eric Chavez last week did go around to the different shelter sites with the FEMA representatives as well, so both Senator Lujan and Senator Heinrich's office have routinely checked out, checked in with me, not checked out, checked in with me to see we need anything, so, and they've been, Carmelo's been boots on the ground along with Eric from her office.
Yes, I would like to comment on that, it's amazing, I've seen congressional, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, congressional or Congresswoman, Representative Senators, all step up and their team, seriously, the Governor has been here as well, so it's a collaborative effort. I have to say that, you know, people are coming together, and as we're continuing to, you know, to get ready, if it hits here, you know, we're working hard to making sure that everything is gonna flow as smooth as possible. After watching these meetings, fire meetings every day, you know, it's ever-changing, I can see that from, literally from one hour to the next, things change a little bit, and so we have to remember, and I say this to the community out there, that, you know, we're watching very closely and making those adjustments as, you know, we're being told, and so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for being here. Maybe you could step forward and talk to us. I have a couple of comments. I was told when I was at the evacuation center in Pinyasco that there are no registered nurses there, as was reported by the state. I wanna make sure we get some registered nurses at the evacuation centers, and there is still a great need for mental health counseling. I don't know if you followed up on that, I have reached out to some clergy, a couple of mental health counselors related to Pinyasco, I assume it's the same at the Ag Center, so I wanna make sure what we're being told is accurate and that there are registered nurses there. When I was there, they said, well, there might be an EMT en route, I don't know if the EMT showed up, but I just wanna make sure we have enough mental health counselors, if it's volunteers, I have reached out to a couple people in Pinyasco to help, and if we could get an evacuation count of how many people are staying at both centers daily, it would just be helpful to know. I know there was 20 or so in Pinyasco, I don't know how many are at the Ag Center, but if someone could help us with the daily count. Regarding all the donations, if you don't know what to do with them, someone needs to transport them down to Vegas, which is actually the clearinghouse for all the donations related to, and I don't know how that works, as far, I think the food needs to stay at our centers, but the clothing, if that's an issue, then I think the Red Cross needs to be in the loop of what they want there, what they don't want there, and as you know, the reuse center in Pinyasco, they have a cargo van that if there's used clothing that is not being used, they can send it to helping kids, kids helping kids, and they get paid five cents a pound or whatever it is, but what I'm attempting to get at is we don't want the used clothing or all these things to go into the landfill.
No, that we've already, that's not gonna happen.
So, I don't know if you wanted to try and clear out some of the donations out of both of our evacuation centers, you know, I'd like to know your plan and know that there is a site in Pinyasco you can take the used clothing to, or you'd have to truck it down to Vegas, that is the clearinghouse for all these donations.
At this point, we don't think it's appropriate to take the, remove the clothing because somebody still might want it. I know we have, I can't remember the individual's name here at the Ag Center, that she kind of is taking that on, and when I was there, she chose the people the different clothes, and at this, we don't wanna remove anything at this point, because we did talk about it, the two of us, Mr. Lucero and Mr. Ortega, there would be inappropriate at this point to remove any clothing, somebody might have a need for it. Did get a message yesterday from the Department of Health, they have given me the name of an assigned behavioral health individual, we do have the name of the individual for, on the medical side, that came over on Monday, and I know Mr. Chief Corvano has been in communication with that individual as well, and another project that they're working on now. We'll make sure that Superintendent Sandoval has those numbers as well.
Any other questions? Commissioners?
The rural infrastructure grant deadline is May 23rd, and there was talk at the NPR TPO amongst Mr. Silva and myself that we could apply for the Pilar Bridge, the new bridge, and I'm wondering if you're able to meet that deadline, because if not, we can go through the NPR TPO asking for an extension.
So, myself and our on-call engineer, Joe Sanchez, have been having discussions on this bridge, so we've already identified, we're working with the contractor supporting the renovation of the bridge, so we're steps ahead on that. We were working on trying to define for this, for this funding opportunity, identify a number that supports with the design, because there's no design on this bridge, so that's gonna be the first step, is searching for some federal funding to support the design. If we were that far ahead, then we could ask for the construction, which right now, the construction, similar bridge would be somewhere close to about 11 million. So, you know, I mean, this would be a perfect timing, but since we don't have a design, can't search for that, so we're a couple steps behind, but yeah, we're in the work in progress, we're trying to identify to make sure this deadline. There's times that I'm gonna have to probably lean on Mr. Sanchez a little more than myself, because this fire crisis has kind of taken a pull me in a couple of different directions, but I'm working on it, and we'll find a way to get a submission in prior to the deadline. I talked to Paul Sidik, there could be an opportunity that Chris Madrid can support with this as well, so that's another avenue of leaning on some support to help our community out. So, yes, there's many irons in the fire, and we're gonna meet the deadline somehow or another.
I just thought the deadline, there was a threat, you have to ask for at least 10 million. I've just, you know, if you ask for 500,000 for design, I'm not sure, I don't know the criteria exactly, but I know.
Essentially, it would be a package, if anything, we were, our discussions, we're asking about 13, 14 million for design and the build-out of the construction of this bridge. So, that's kind of like, you know, I don't know how strong the submission will be based on that, but normally submissions, when they're shovel-ready and you have a design in place, it's kind of, that's how the norm within a lot of these projects that are being unveiled, it's, if it's, you're just waiting on just funding shovel-ready, they kind of come to you, but knowing that we're asking for design, and it's gonna be a crapshoot, but we're gonna do our best to try to get that in there, that's probably the best manner of trying to put this together. Yeah, I'll provide everybody with feedback by next week or so.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, Commissioners, that to bring it through the Transportation Project Fund, grant applications, there's only 17 million per transportation organization to make a request for a new bridge at 14 million, chances we'd never get that money, so that's why I think the federal route for the new bridge in Pilar is the best way to go, thank you.
Great, that's good news, though, that we have the opportunity. Any, anything else, so we can move forward now? Okay, let's go on to, thank you, County Manager, appreciate everything, and Mr. Silva. Next is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting, Commissioners? I'm gonna pause at this moment and not ask for anything, because I know that we're really inundated here with trying to keep up with fires, but I'll come back later on. So, moving on to Commissioners' announcements, any announcements? Other than I would like to share that I did attend the UNM Taos commencement ceremony, it was a beautiful two-day event, and so I was very grateful to be there and representing the commission, so just wanted to share that with you. Anything else, Commissioners? None, okay, and next, we're at Board and Committee Reports, and Commissioner Fabro.
I actually had two New Mexico County's Board of Directors, and the highlight of that meeting was, as most of you know, Steve Kolkman has retired, will retire in November. We formalized the replacement, and that will be Ms. Joya Sparzen. There will be, they're starting the phase out and bringing her in since now, and he has a bunch of annual leave that he's going to be using up as well, that he would be available. And the other thing of importance is Brian Moore has been the lobbyist there for, I don't know, every, all during our term, and he is not coming back as a lobbyist, he wants to spend more time with the family and stuff, so the conference, annual conference is coming up, it's in Albuquerque. I have multiple meetings associated with that. Then under New Mexico County Insurance Authority, the past few years since COVID, we've had a reduction in our work comp, especially the first year, because we had, everyone was working from home, so there was hardly any claims. So, we had a 50% reduction in our work comp payment to New Mexico County's Insurance Authority every year. Last year, we had enough in our reserves to do that again. This year, we're not being able to, we're not going to be able to do the 50% reduction in work comp premiums, but Taos County, because of our lower loss ratio than others, we grouped them in different, we're getting the maximum, which is gonna be about 35%. And there's a new member to the pool, Los Alamos County, which, everything is based off of wages, and when you bring in new people, then, so it looks like everything had to go up, but our, our reserves, the policy of the board is to keep one year in reserves, and we were above that by about 40%, so that's what is giving us this reduction. Any questions?
Any question?
And I also have the multiline and the law enforcement numbers as well, we voted on those, so if you're not, if you don't get those for budget soon, let me know when I have that.
Madam Chair, I'm wondering who is being trained for the Commissioners' Madam Chair, I'm wondering who is being trained for the Commissioner's replacement?
For what? For which?
Yours. Your boards?
Oh, I know. Well, I'm hoping that, I know there's one of our Commissioners that's present, sitting close to the middle, not next to me, that is very interested in going to the New Mexico Counties Board, and I think she'd be a great fit for that board. New Mexico County Insurance Authority, it's, Patrick used to have to sit in, and he was our loss prevention attorney for the New Mexico Counties. So, some of those meetings are pretty intense. We had an executive session this last one, that was not fun. So, you know, there's the good and the bad, but that's a very good board to go on, so we need to make sure that somebody will give the time and dedication to that board. We benefit by getting, if we're more, the more active we are, the better our rates are going to be in that board. So, that's something that's very important to our budget.
Commissioner Fabro, thank you for sharing. We'll certainly have to put the right people in there.
Madam Chair, I know we want to get out of here, but we do have our congressional liaison here, and I'm just wondering if you might be able to recognize her, to see if she has any information she'd like to share.
Ms. Quintana, is there, would you like to come forward, please? And we're grateful that you're here, that you stopped by, and don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're probably used to it, so, for someone.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Carmela Quintana, and I'm the field representative for Senator Ben Ray Lujan, stationed in Santa Fe, formerly of the Senator Udall's office, and formerly of 20 years in the Air Force. So, I am the Taos County Field Rep, and I am here today because, well, Mr. Hadamio and I had spoke, and we've been wanting to get together, but also, I've been coming up to go to this evacuation site, as well as meet with all the other people that I work with in, within the county. But I really don't have anything else to say, except for that I took notes on what you were talking about, and I've already sent a text message to my boss on the, to see if she can get some guidance on a few things from the EOC level, and then provide those to Mr. Hadamio, just as a helper. We're here to help any way we can, facilitate anything we can, and of course, when you're talking about grants, Brent and I will work together to provide what the delegation provides in terms of grants and searches and letters of support, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, if you have anything else for me, I'm here to answer if I can, or get in more information if I can.
I think it has to do with FEMA, if I may, Madam Chair. The procedure for residents to apply when they can, can they apply when they are in the go status, even though they haven't lost any property? I think, I know Commissioner Serna was on the fire briefing last night and gave a lot of that information, but it would be nice for us to understand exactly how it works. I know, and then I guess Representative Ledger was attempting to get an extension for today's deadline for the FEMA applications. So, it's a bit confusing, and I think, given most of these people who have been, lost their homes, it's confusing to them as well. So, if there's some way you could show us, give us a flow chart, a link, see if that extension is grant, was granted for these applications. I know there was additional $500 given, so it's just be nice to have, to understand that information. If you could help us with that, we really appreciate it. And then we can put it on our website, FEMA links.
Sure. I, you know, as has already been said, this is a dynamic process, it's changing from minute to minute, day-to-day, right? Consequently, while you're asking me about FEMA, my boss is actually meeting with the FEMA director right now, somewhere in the state. So, this is very timely. We'll get you what we can, we'll get your answers to your questions. I'll provide them to Mr. Hadamio, and then the county can put them up on their website. Of course, it's changing all the time. So, there is FEMA representatives at all the sites. I know I've been to Glorieta here, I'm going to go to Glorieta tomorrow, and Santa Fe, and Eric's doing Piñasco, because we obviously can't be all at the same place, but I totally understand what you're saying, you need a one-source resource document, something that you can put up, something that's easy, and we'll get you the answers to those questions, and I'll hopefully have them by the end of the day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have the FEMA link, do we not, on our website?
So, it is there.
Okay, so, oh, wait, I do have, oh, yeah, sorry.
FEMA has given our office the okay to start helping process residents for FEMA, so they don't actually, they'll be able to, if I'm on-site, once I learn how to, once they give us the tutorial, I'll be able to help, too. So, that way, we spread out the wealth between FEMA and ourselves. So, our office has been given that opportunity to help FEMA, because there's just too many people and too little of them. So, thank you.
I like that comment, spread the wealth, right, so we can all help. Thank you very much. And I believe now, Commissioners, we're at adjournment, motion to adjourn. Is there a motion? Are you kidding? At 11:02? We have a motion in a second. Can you call for a vote?
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brett?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. Thank you.